Well, I'll call the Monday, March 30th, 2015 regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. We reserve 10 minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. And seeing no members of the public in the audience, I'm not going to go through the spiel.
They're public.
They're staff. They're part two. So with that, we will move on to item two, which is the Consolidated Plan Update. And Stephanie Jennings.
Hi. Thank you for inviting me. Terry, did you want to give any preface at all or just dive right in?
I'll just remind the commission how this presentation came about. In addition to the fact that the Consolidated Plan is going to council very soon and we thought you'd want to hear about it, you also discussed housing affordability in general in the context of our discussions about the urban growth boundary. So it was at that last meeting where I said, hey, wouldn't it be nice to have Stephanie come give us an overview of the Consolidated Plan? And I believe everyone said, that sounds really good. So that's why we're here today discussing this. And we'll have time for questions after the presentation.
Absolutely. And you know, if there's some questions that come up as I'm going along or something that you need some clarification, feel free to ask as well. So I should start just by recognizing John Brofsky's service both on the CDBG Advisory Committee, and he has also been serving on the Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee that was formed to specifically advise the development of that. And so I think through both of those efforts, we have been trying to create a connection to the work of the Planning Commission, and that has been helpful. So what I'm going to do today is just talk a little bit about the Consolidated Plan purpose and process, give you guys a little bit of background on the two main federal programs that are affected by the Consolidated Plan, which are the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Programs.
And can I, what does "home" stand for?
It's actually not an acronym.
Ah.
It's just, they just wanted in capital letters to make you feel that it's very important.
Okay.
So yes, good question. I got the same question at the Sustainability Commission meeting last week.
We're just all about acronyms.
Yes. Yes. I'll talk a little bit about what we've been able to achieve over the past five years in the most, in the current Consolidated Plan, which ends on June 30th. We have, as part of the Consolidated Planning Process, been doing a pretty in-depth look at community needs and trends to inform future priorities. We have developed draft priority needs and strategies that are going to be presented to council as part of the plan later in April. And then, and then lastly, I'll just kind of briefly go over what are the next steps. So in general, the purpose, the Consolidated Plan, we didn't create this document or create this name. It's something that is required by HUD. They do call it a consolidated plan, so every community that receives an entitlement allocation of CDBG and/or home funds must complete a consolidated plan in order to receive those funds. And so you can choose to do it every three years or five years. We do it, we do a consolidated plan every five years. And the purpose of this is to assess housing trends, develop goals and strategies. There is an emphasis on coordinating with other plans. And so there are a lot of questions in that process about how are we making connections to other plans and planning processes? And there's also an element of considering how the jurisdiction's policies, not necessarily as it relates to the distribution of the funds, but just how its policies in and of itself affect housing affordability. And so this is an aspect of the Consolidated Plan that I've been working on with planning staff and also work with, on with planning staff over the five-year period, just on a regular basis. Yes.
So when you say assess how this housing needs, is it for all housing needs?
Yes.
And it's not just certain classifications of, last one, affordable housing?
You know, I would say that the emphasis is primarily on people with low and moderate incomes. So those are the questions that we're generally being asked to address in both the, in the Consolidated Planning Process. So we expect to receive about $13 million over a five-year period. That is a combination of the CDBG and home funds for both Eugene and Springfield, because this is a joint planning process with Springfield. I would say about $8 million of those dollars will come to Eugene through the CDBG and home programs. It is an estimate, Congress changes the appropriation levels every year for the CDBG and home programs. And so there really has been some pretty significant fluctuations. And I'll show you a graph in a moment that kind of shows the overall trajectory of what's been happening with this funding.
I was just curious, did you give us any idea of how much $8 million of the city of Eugene, what the city would get for that? I mean, as far as number of units built, number of people helped or anything?
Yes, we will go over the outcomes over the past five years and the projections of what we're hoping to get to in the next five years. Yes.
Is the allocation between Eugene and Springfield, is it pretty much based on population?
It, so there is a number of factors that HUD takes into account in its formula. And it's, so, and there are different formulas for CDBG and home. But some of it has to do with poverty, it has to do with population, it has to do with quality of your housing. So there are a number of different variables that are included in the formula allocation. But it's not competitive. You know, we are told, here's how much you receive, and we don't have any control over getting more or getting less.
So we're not competing with other communities for funds? It's just decided whatever we get?
Yeah. By receiving, by being an entitlement community, we are entitled to our formula allocation as long as we are meeting all of the CDBG and home requirements and rules. Yes. So home funding is primarily for the creation of permanent and transitional affordable housing units. CDBG is available for a broader set of uses, best suited for affordable housing, economic opportunities, human service operations, and capital facilities. And you can also use it to make kind of more general improvements in low-income areas like parks improvements. As we look at the funding levels over time, you can see that it has dropped pretty dramatically. And you know, and this is, this is a funding trend that has been continuing over a very long period of time. I read somewhere, you know, back when the program, when CDBG was first created in the 1970s, the average grantee received about $12 million a year in allocations. And now it's down to like $2 million. We, our average allocation for CDBG is about $1.2 million per year at this point in time. So as we think about the Consolidated Plan process, we're looking at our past activities, we're assessing community needs and market conditions, setting our general priorities, and then trying to create that match with what our community priorities are and what are the eligible uses of these funds, which is a very important step in the process. And then setting goals, strategies, and measurements for what we want to achieve over the next five years. This is a little bit of the timeline and the process that we've been going through. We've done a lot of data review. We've done a large number of outreach and consultations to different groups within the community. We're, we've gone through a lot of the priority setting and goals. We have had two work sessions with Eugene City Council. And so we're now kind of in the, in the final stages of working with the Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee and taking a recommendation to council in April. And we'll finalize and submit to HUD. It's due to HUD by May 15th. So to your question regarding the past activities, you know, and so I think it's important to remember that the planned outcome was based on that higher level of funding that we were receiving five years ago. And so as you can see, in some cases, we've been able to meet goals or come close to meeting goals. The estimated outcome of units is, units that will actually be completed by the end, by June 30th. We have a number of units that are in progress, but we won't count those in this period. We'll count them in the next period of time. So let's see here. One thing that I do want to just add specifically about the acquiring the land bank sites. So we had anticipated acquiring a couple of additional sites in this five-year period. HUD changed their rules around how long we could hold sites for. So it really, we had to turn our attention to making sure that we were developing the sites that we had already in the land bank before acquiring more sites. Yes.
Your planned outcomes in a plan should be based accordingly, I would think, on the amount of money that you're receiving. If you only have half the number of units or two-thirds under existing housing, et cetera, does that mean there was money not spent?
Well, we don't know how much money we're going to receive over the five-year period.
I think he's asking in 2010, and I think you were mentioning that the funding was just based on anticipated funding and the funding was reduced.
Right.
So you don't change your planned outcomes even though the funding is reduced?
You could, you don't have to. And so, I mean, it would go, you would have to go through a fairly significant process. You'd have to do what's called a substantial amendment to your consolidated plan. And from HUD's perspective, these are planned outcomes, and so they're not holding us to these. We're not penalized if we don't meet them.
So if one was looking to how well your plan went, on the amount of money you received and you did 226 units, was that good or was that, how does one evaluate that?
I would say that, you know, I would say it's important for us to kind of understand what we had hoped to do as a community and what we were able to do, given the funding limitations and that we had available to us. You know, I would say certainly, yeah, I mean, we didn't meet our goal. But whether or not that was within our control is, is a question that is worthy of some discussion.
Another thing to, to consider with that is you put a plan out, like this plan that we're putting out now, that it goes forward five years, needs change quicker than a five-year window, you know? And so that's why each year, there's an allocation process, and we look at what the needs are for that particular year. This is kind of the overbrought, you know, the, okay HUD, here's what we're thinking we're going to do in five years. And then each year, the committee that I sit on, the Community Development Block Grant Committee, looks at the needs that are on a year-to-two-year window and try to allocate those monies to that area. Not necessarily, you know, we try and look at what the overall goals are, but those goals, you know, may have changed, you know, as, as the community changes. So I think that they have done a pretty good job meeting goals. And then the other thing that we did in this plan was we looked back at this plan and see where the goals, like let's say the, the planned outcomes for the number of units, going forward, we say, okay, well, let's look at that one because that one was a significant difference. And maybe in the next five-year plan, use that as a tool to.
Well, and I think, I guess I would also say, you know, in talking with city council, I mean, if we want to get to 500 units, what are the additional steps that we need to take over the next five years to get there? And so I think that's something that we're talking about in the context of Envision Eugene. And so, you know, the city of Eugene has had this 100 units a year goal for a very, very long period of time. And so at the time that the 2010 plan was created, it appeared at that funding level that we would be able to meet this. And so, you know, what I would add is, at this point in time, we actually have 100 units that are under development. And so this is just units that are completed as of June 30th, or anticipated to be completed as of June 30th. Do you have other questions?
No, no. The way I phrased the question might have, I was just, you know, if someone, if I look at that and the estimated outcome, I would have liked to comment to say, based on the amount of money received, we did a great job and achieved, you know, I don't have a feel for it unless I'm told.
And I guess that maybe would be my question. Were we able during this period to utilize all of the funds that were available to us from HUD?
We haven't utilized all of the money. We've used, utilized the significant majority of the money we have. I mean, there's always sort of a lag because, you know, these are, these are, the larger development projects are multi-year projects. So you receive the money, you allocate the money, you commit the money, and then the project gets developed, and then you don't actually complete the project sometimes until two to three years later. Because in most cases, they're seeking additional resources from the state through the low-income housing tax credit process, and they're going through the development process. On the next slide, I can show you some examples of what we've been able.
Funds don't lapse, right?
They do.
They lapse.
Well, there are different requirements. So with home, you have two years, you can't have more than two years' worth of home, uncommitted home funds on hand. And then you have five years to expend those dollars. With CDBG, you can have no more than one and a half times your annual allocation on hand each year when you, when you do a time limit test.
Okay.
Yes. So just looking at the next slide, you can see, these are the developments that were completed during this period of time, serving a pretty wide array of needs in the community. So, and varying density levels and varying locations throughout the community. So Willikenzie Crossing and Stellar Apartments were built on city-owned land bank sites. The third site, which is now under construction, is the County Farm. The land building was developed on land owned by St. Vincent de Paul for their former thrift store, and that is 35 one-bedroom units. And then the three developments on the bottom are all special needs housing developments. So Boffy Cottage and Roosevelt Crossing serve ex-offenders. 29th Place Apartments is, it was an existing development that was preserved using our funding and other funding sources, and it's 35 units for people with severe mental illness. So all of these units were created, were targeted to very low-income households earning 60% of area median income and below. Almost half were targeted to specific populations. I think one piece that is important for folks to keep in mind as we're, we're trying to leverage these dollars, so this $4 million in home and CDBG funds that were spent on these affordable housing developments leveraged over $36 million in state, federal, and private investments. And then we typically couple with these dollars with the Eugene System Development Charge Grant and Low-Income Rental Housing Property Tax Exemption, which are our local programs. Yes.
Could you go back? So on the, so on the SDC charge grant, is that, do the monies come out of the HUD money to repay the city for that charge?
No.
So that charge then has to be collected through other development, non-subsidized projects?
No, I'd have to talk with Public Works to.
It's got to come from somewhere.
Yeah, I'd have to talk with Public Works to determine exactly how they manage it. Within code, there is an amount that is established for the SDC charge grant program. And then Nancy Burns over in Public Works manages it and tells us how much money we have available for our allocation process.
So that's something that's actually budgeted into the SDC program in the beginning?
I would have to defer to Public Works on how that works exactly.
So is that essentially just a waiver of the charges for SDCs for these projects?
Yes.
So I just was, wanted to make sure it wasn't an additional set of funds beyond the waiver, that's all?
No, no, it is, it is specifically for SDCs. I believe it does not cover regional SDCs. It's the, it's the local SDCs.
Is there a reason you chose 60% AMI rather than just saying what it was is low, low income? I mean, why did you pick medium income and then took a percentage versus it's low income and it's the 10% of the low? I mean, I don't understand the difference in the figures.
So the, the home funds, you are limited to using those funds to, for, to benefit people earning 60% of the area median income and below. And that is established by HUD. And so that, that is why we refer to it as 60% AMI.
So they didn't choose whatever the low income, okay.
Well, so.
It's different for different communities.
It is.
I know.
It is.
But they could have just said for your community, the areas low income. Okay, never mind, HUD did it that way.
So they, I mean, so every community has an area median income that's established. And then for CDBG, CDBG funds have to support people earning 80% of area median income and below. And then the home funds actually has a lower target. It's 60% of area median income and below. So the other set of activities are the community development strategies, and these are all supported with the Community Development Block Grant Funds. The affordable housing strategies are supported with a combination of CDBG and home funds. So there are four primary areas. Support human service operations and capital improvements. And so we are only allowed to use up to 15% of CDBG funds, and we, the city takes those funds and grants them to the Human Services Commission, which then in turn combines them with a large number of other sources of human services funding to support human service operations in the community. The other program that we're engaged with is supporting capital improvements to where human service operations are, exist. So there's a wide range of facilities that have received grants through this program. And the city actually plays a very significant role in managing this and kind of directly manages the process, working with the contractors, because most human service agencies really aren't skilled in kind of the architecture and development. So we have, we were able to support 10 facilities over this period of time. And I have some examples on the next slide that I'll show you. Yes.
The 80% AMI doesn't pertain to business loans, I assume?
So, yes, it does.
So the owner income has to be 80% of the medium income?
So the, so the way that, I'll explain. The way that the business loans qualify for CDBG funds is that they have to be used to create jobs that are available to low-income people.
Okay.
And so, so you have to make them available to low-income people and then document who received the job and what their income is. If it is, if it is a, an owner of a small business, you know, and they're not creating jobs or they're hiring people, they could qualify based on their own income. But you have to be able to look back over the past year and verify that they actually have a low income. The other aspect of that economic development activity, we have provided grants in the past to support microenterprise training. The third area is increased accessibility to public facilities. So this has supported the curb ramps and accessible pedestrian devices over the past five years. And then the last area is make strategic investments to low-income neighborhoods or areas of slums and blight. And so for example, there was a streetscape improvement process along Blair Avenue that was in a low-income area, and that counts as one of these projects. We've also done park improvements and other efforts. So the non, examples of the nonprofit capital facilities projects, St. Vincent de Paul Homeless Single Access Center, improvements to the accessibility at the dining room for, owned by Food for Lain County, improvements to the Head Start Program at the Whittaker School. We helped Looking Glass purchase this house beside their facility, their new roads facility that allowed them to expand their services. A fairly significant remodel of a, of a secure facility owned by Shelter Care. And then we helped Catholic Community Services acquire their service center on West Sixth Other examples of business development loans, Nankasi Inn at the Fifth, and then, you know, smaller businesses like Noizette and Off the Waffle, and then other entities in the community that are providing a significant number of jobs, Fertile Lab, Oakshire. So just kind of moving into some of the community needs, and I think you guys are pretty familiar with some of these changes, but these are things that we've considered as we, as we're looking at where should we be targeting these funds in the future. Definitely taking into account the growing number of Latino people in our community, as well as our aging population. Kind of along with the aging population, we are seeing a growing number of people with As we think about economic vulnerability.
Person of age now, I see, because I'm over 60.
Distinguished honor.
Yes.
Again, we're complaining.
We've got multiple indicators of community continuing economic vulnerability, poverty rate and percentage of people who are receiving food stamps. We also see a fairly significant number of children and youth from those three school districts that are eligible for free and reduced-price lunches. And we have doubled the statewide incidence of homelessness. And a quarter of those who are homeless in our community are chronically homeless. And then, you know, kind of looking below the tip of the iceberg, we have a very large number of people in our community that really don't have assets or savings that can help them withstand, you know, a medical event, or a divorce, or a job loss that really is oftentimes the event that catapults people into poverty. As we look at geographic needs, we do have certain parts of our community that have concentrations of multiple indicators of economic vulnerability. This Economic Vulnerability Index was created as part of the Equity and Opportunity Assessment under the Lain Livability Consortium. And, and really, it's a way of trying to kind of pull together several different indicators to see. And as you can, this is a little bit hard to see on this, but there's also a colored copy in your, in your packet. The darker areas is where you see the higher levels of economic vulnerability across multiple indicators. And the lighter areas are the places where you see the lowest levels of economic vulnerability in the community. As we think about wages and employment, we definitely are still recovering from the recession. We have gained some jobs back. The jobs we have gained back tend to have lower wages and tend to offer fewer hours. And so we're still really struggling to get back to the economic footing that we had even before the recession, which many people would say wasn't all that great to begin with. Yes.
What's the timeframe for the 5,400 jobs since 2010? When is that, from 2010 to when?
I'd have to look at that. I'd have to look at that. I think it is through the, through mid-2014.
As the last 12 months ending in February 2015, we picked up 4,000 jobs.
Across the county.
Yeah, I believe that's, so I'm just...
I can look at that.
Double-check these numbers. And I'd also suggest that in some cases, you've kind of stopped your numbers at December, and there are newer numbers available in February. And I'd suggest you use the most recently available numbers. They will tell a little different story. I don't think it changes the need or the, or the story we have to tell.
Yep.
I think in a way it makes it more compelling because it'll show that employment is down. Yes, we have a recovery, but we still have these increasing challenges to the community. I don't think it diminishes the need at all, but I think it might improve the credibility of the request.
Yeah, I will, I will double-check to see what numbers were used. We worked with our economic development staff to develop these numbers.
I understand this takes place over a period of time. You do it at a period of time, so.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
On those, actually, it's page eight of your thing. On those figures on employment and economic opportunity, when you talk about Lain County and Eugene Springfield, when you talk about Lain County, it doesn't include the metro area with its job rate?
It does. When we talk about Lain County, so in many cases, the data that's available to us might only be available to us at the county level. So when we, when we can, we use data that just reflects the consolidated plan area of Eugene and Springfield. But when you see that we're using county data, it's really because it's only available at the county level.
So that's what I didn't understand, because when I looked at that, it said, you know, Eugene is 11, Springfield 13, but the county's 6.7. And if they're including the 11 and the 13, then the county must be zero, really, if we're included in there.
I'm sorry, could you direct me to where exactly?
Page eight.
Might be the whole county, so it goes from floor.
Page nine.
I know it's the whole county, but I'm just saying that, that to have the whole county 6.7, but the population base that we represent is 11 and 13.
So...
It didn't make any sense to me.
Middle of page nine, Employment and Economy.
Page eight on mine, I guess, okay. Oh, that's on the new one?
Yeah, on the new one.
Okay. I just didn't understand that when I read that, how if we were part of the county, how it could be 6.7, but then we're 11 and 13 and we represent quite a lot of population of the county.
I will, I will double-check those numbers with our economic development staff. And so, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Those numbers.
While we're talking those numbers, on page seven of what you just handed out at very bottom, it talks about the median income, Eugene, 40,006, 28, Springfield, 39, but Lain County shows up to be higher than both Eugene and Springfield?
Yes. So one thing that's important to take into account is when we're talking about median income, it includes all households. And so we have a very large number of students living off-campus that, and if you are a full-time student living off-campus, you're counted in this. So...
That's always, I've always thought that's wrong because mom and dad are supporting 50% of those people up there. So their income, my kid went to school, he had zero income other than mom and dad. So it really skews that. But if Eugene Springfield are part of Lain County, how can it be higher mathematically? That just, doesn't make sense to me.
Well, Eugene and Springfield make up, what, about 60% of the population of the entire county?
Seventy, sixty-two percent. So that's two-thirds. I don't know. It seems like to me every other thing that I've ever read, Lain County was always lower because you include Lawrence, which is retirement, Oak Ridge, which is struggling every minute of the year. I don't know, that was a surprising number because I think everything else would have chosen the other way around.
Man, I don't even have that.
We will double-check these numbers, but my understanding is that they are correct.
Commissioner Mills and then Baker.
Once again, I'd encourage you to get the most recent numbers. And I'd also ask that you take a look at the statement you make on page seven, second paragraph, "In summation, the local economy has continued to decline, resulting in fewer job opportunities and less income-related households." I feel like that's a pretty misleading statement. And I'd suggest that that needs to be reworded.
Okay.
I think it, you know, I don't think it diminishes our case for what we're asking for, that we need it despite improvements in the economy. So...
Well, that's a, that's a reasonable suggestion. So you're looking on page seven?
Page seven, second paragraph, "Beginning in summation." That first sentence, I feel...
Right.
Is, would be considered misleading by many.
Would you consider it to be more accurate to say the local economy is in a period of recovery?
Yes, I think that that's, that's more accurate.
Yeah. Call Brian Overitt. State Department Office.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker had a question?
No, I was just going to say that there are some areas in Lain County where there probably are higher incomes. Outside of Eugene on the city limits, on the south side over on the hill. So there are some parts of the county that...
That might skew that.
That might skew that, just because Pleasant Hill is an example, another example.
I mean, one of the things, employment data is available pretty much on a month-to-month basis. When you're looking at median income, it's now based on the American Community Survey, which is a five-year estimate. So you're, so I'm happy to look at it and update it, but I don't think we're going to see significant changes in those numbers.
The incomes.
On the incomes, because, because it is based on a sample and it's a rolling five-year sample. And these are some of the challenges with the changes in the census. And so, you know, so you used to have a very clear picture, but it was a snapshot and it was only offered once every 10 years with the decennial census. And now you have this rolling averages, but when you try to get down to very specific areas, you, you have such a small sample that the accuracy of that sample is not very good. Okay, so let's continue on. So when we think about dimensions of housing need, we tend to think about four factors: affordability, availability, quality, and location and access. And we know people who are looking for housing are often trading off between these four different aspects of housing need. And as we think about housing conditions in our community, I think it's useful to think about each of these issues independently and then understand how they come together to create housing cost challenges for people who are living here. So as we think about housing affordability, you're really looking at the wages versus the rents and the mortgage costs. And we know that a renter making the average wage would need to work 58 hours to, a week to afford the average two-bedroom rental in our community. So that means they're paying no more than 30% of their income.
58 hours a week?
58 hours a week. So instead of a 40-hour week, it would be a 58-hour week.
To get to the 30%.
Exactly, exactly.
I was thinking that they were working 58 hours a week just to pay the rent.
Yep. No, not just to pay the rent, correct. In order to afford, which is the key word. So housing quality, almost two-thirds of our housing stock was built before 1980. So we're starting to see more issues with housing quality in the community. And about 5% of units are manufactured homes. Some of these manufactured homes are getting to be quite, quite elderly.
I don't understand the correlation between the year built and the housing quality. When I read that in here, it didn't make sense to me. Because I'll tell you that a lot of houses built before the 1950s have a whole lot more quality than houses built in the 2000 era.
Condition, maybe, is a better word?
That's what I was going to ask. Are you referring to condition versus quality? Quality is the things that you put into it to make the house. Now, you can have a very good quality house that's in very poor condition, or you can have a very limited-quality house that's in very good condition. And I'm not sure, as I read through this, I didn't understand why that is. I mean, there's a lot of great houses that were built in the 30s and 40s. So I don't, I didn't catch why something built before 1980 seemed to have a challenge to it.
Well, I think, I think, as I just look at the affordable housing stock, you know, developments that were built kind of in the 1980s are getting to the point where they need major systems replacements. They need some significant energy efficiency upgrades. You know, if they hadn't been upgraded or maintained over time, they are probably going to be in condition that is not going to be very close at all to newer units. Our codes have also changed significantly over the past 30 years. And so while the bones of an older house might be great, it's still probably going to need, you know, new roof, new water heater, and other systems. And so it's, it is a rough approximation. It doesn't mean that it needs to be demolished. It just means that it needs to be upgraded.
I'm wondering, you're thinking the more appropriate word is condition? Well, my point is, is that what you're saying is you have property owners then that didn't take care of their homes. I mean, they tell you that if you don't, if you don't put in about, I think it's 5% of the value of your home on an annual basis, you're falling behind. I don't know. As I read that, that's just, it just, maybe it's because I know housing too much. It just made no sense to me. I looked at that's apartment.
I can tell you that, you know, in the past 10 years that I've been with the city, we've done some pretty significant acquisition remodel projects. And, you know, for lower-income people in the community, these units are in very significant disrepair.
Well, I understand that, but my guess is that most of them were low-end rentals, probably in either, probably a lot of them, because I've seen a lot of them along arterials or heavily-traveled arterial, or heavierly-traveled road areas. Which, I could agree with that, but I think you block off those kind of streets. Again, I just, it's a little bit hard for me to swallow that comment.
I think the struggle seems to be with the use of the word quality as opposed to condition. That's what I'm hearing.
I had the same reaction to that, but I'm glad to hear, if that's part of these programs that you mentioned, that you do have programs to address those homeowners to upgrade their homes.
Yes, yes.
Quick time check? We got about 10 minutes left for this. How much is left in the presentation?
Several slides.
Okay, let's go through the presentation.
We haven't even gotten to the projected outcomes.
Okay.
Just following up, it would maybe make, would make sense just to change the wording to housing condition.
Or slash condition, quality slash condition.
Okay. And then, yeah, go ahead, Stephanie, and we'll try and hold our questions so that you can get through the presentation.
Great, thank you. Housing availability, you know, and again, some of these factors may be changing. I think there is a lot of conjecture about what's going to happen to rental vacancy rates in the community. I can tell you from working with affordable housing providers that are looking to both place low-income residents in available rental housing and also that are looking to potentially purchase developments, there's really not very much available for low-income people in the community. It might be at higher income levels and rent levels that units become available. But the experience of most providers at this point, even if somebody does have rent assistance available to them, that they can't find a unit in the community. So housing locations, just in general, units in better locations tend to have higher costs. And so that's also another factor that people are trading off as they're considering what their housing options are within the community. So as we think about setting the priorities and strategies for the future, we have talked with the Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee and City Council, given the decreasing level of funding and the community conditions that we're seeing. We proposed to council to focus on the three areas of housing opportunity, human services, and economic opportunity. That was supported in the council work session. And so we have proceeded with developing strategies that specifically address and focus on these three issue areas.
Is the, is your order there meant to be the priority order?
No.
I put economic on top because it could solve the next year's problems.
And then the next steps are to refine and finalize the priority needs and strategies. We're holding a final Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee tomorrow. Eugene Council Action is scheduled for April 15th. Springfield will take action later in April. And then we will complete and submit the plan to HUD on May 15th. And so what, the last thing that I just want to point to your attention, bring to your attention, is in the, on the last two pages of the document, you see the strategies to adjust the priority needs. And you can see that there are the strategies, the priority needs that we are addressing through that strategy, examples, and then the specific measurements that we, we will be using. Some of these measurements are established by HUD, so we don't, we have to choose from a menu of options. And there are some where they didn't have an appropriate measure and we added a measure to reflect the goal. In terms of the strategies, there is quite a bit of similarity between what the goals were for 2010, or what the strategies were for 2010 to 2015. We are trying to focus more specifically on the issues of human services, access to human services, economic opportunity, and affordable housing in this plan. So I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
Just one question. Is the CDBG citywide? Because there was only one map in there and that just showed low and moderate income. And I didn't know if that was your target area for these programs or it's truly entire city is eligible for CDBG.
So the, it depends on the type of CDBG activity. So there are some CDBG activities that you can only do in an area with a majority of low-income people. So for example, public improvements, like a park improvement, would only be eligible for a low-income area. Other activities like affordable housing or human services are for the city as a whole because it's based on the people that are served in that specific development or through that specific service.
So that map reflects the low and moderate, the low to income, okay. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Commissioner Duncan?
Well, I mean, part of the challenge our community has, it seems to me, is, part of it has to do with our land inventory, which we're finishing. Where we, we're always kind of limited to how much land we can have inside for development. And our land inventory currently is shifting to where a lot of our available land, truly available land, is up in our hills, which you can't really build affordable housing in. So the amount of available land for housing developments, particularly any type of multifamily, is diminishing very quickly. And I think a lot of that has to do with the way our statewide planning goals are, as long as they're very archaic. But it would seem to me that part of what something like this could help the state start to understand, or maybe HUD understand, is some of the limitations that occur because of the older statewide planning goals that really don't take into account truly the lowest-income community members we have or community people. Because it doesn't allow for some expansion or additional expansion for this type of housing. It just is all lumped in as part of everything. It just is all lumped in as part of everything. And until we can actually say, we need to have some land specific for this type of use, it's got to compete with everything that's out there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the city went on a, you know, they tried to buy sites with the idea it's cheaper now than later. That's a bad philosophy in my book, because it's really all relative to what the market's doing. So I mean, it seems like that something like this could also sort of point out, what is it that the state or other areas or other government could do to help these problems? And it'd be nice to see that kind of document in here, because this sort of talks about, gee, we're going to go get this money, and we're going to do these great things, which I appreciate, but it doesn't talk about the problems, the growing problems we're going to continue to have. And I'm going to guess the money's going to continue to diminish more and more, to a point you're going to ask yourself, why even do this exercise? But until we actually get a way to get more land for, for really affordable housing, not just housing affordability, it's going to become even more difficult, more difficult. Because again, our plan is to also try to build 1,500, 1,600 units along our corridors, multifamily units, that we really don't have lands for.
Mm-hmm.
So this housing has to compete with even that phantom inventory that we're going to try to prove up on at some point. And it's just going to get harder and harder and harder. And so somehow, I think that kind of information needs to continually be fed out there, so people start to realize it. You know, instead of just deal with it as, oh, we're going to do these projects and these projects, but those projects then compete with the folks that are just above that threshold, 30%, or whatever the numbers are you're working with. And then they have a problem, because competition's pushing down here, but not helping this. It just seems to me that that kind of discussion would be helpful.
Well, and I would say, I mean, this document is to fulfill a specific federal purpose. And in order to enable us to receive this money and be able to use it over the next five years. I think a lot of these discussions about how do, are what we are seeing through here connect with overall Envision Eugene efforts are part of the work that will happen. And I've been involved in discussions with Terry and with SAC, you know, talking about the housing element chapter, how to think about some of these issues, how to incorporate this thinking in the city's overall planning efforts moving forward. So I would kind of actually say, maybe I think the great, the best landing place for some of this is, is in some of the work that planning staff are leading. And I'm doing the very best that I can to support them and help them.
Yeah. Just very quickly, we anticipate coming back at the end of April to have a discussion with the Planning Commission about the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan that will go along with the UGB. And we can begin to talk about some of those connections, because I do see a strong link between what's happening in the consolidated plan and what we're going to be doing in the comprehensive plan, where we can talk about our policies for land inventory, our policies for removing regulatory barriers to certain kinds of housing, and those kinds of things that we have control over in the comp plan. They are different documents, but there's definitely overlap.
Commissioner Mills and then Commissioner Ross.
And this is very brief. You know, to me, what we're talking about here is affordability, which is a pillar of the Envision Eugene.
Yeah.
And I think what we're seeing here is that we're failing somewhat, at least for a significant portion of our community, to fulfill the promise of that pillar with what we're planning to do now.
And for me, going to Commissioner Duncan's comment, this plan is more of a, really a jump through a hoop, a lot of things to make, that, you know, you've got to check all these boxes to get this HUD money. And so what you were talking about going into this plan, I think you take this plan and move it the other way. And say, these are the needs that we need to address at a local level, and this shows how it is, rather than trying to prove that up to the feds, which is what this, this plan is, in my view, is supposed to do, is prove up to the feds, so that we can get the money. And then, you know, and then when we're doing the work that Terry was talking about, we say, hey, we've got this plan that shows the needs and all of this stuff, how are we going to get there?
You know, and I would also just add, I mean, I think what we're trying to show through this here are sort of the limitations of what we're able to address through the federal funding. And so that does create an entree point for having a conversation, you know, if we do want to really address these needs, what additional steps might need to happen in order to do that.
Commissioner Baker, last comment.
Yeah, I just want to agree with the commissioners that, you know, there's some larger policy issues. And in the past, I think there have been times, if you go back far enough, where we gave tax exemptions, property tax exemptions, there was a component where there was a requirement of a certain percentage of the units to be affordable. And those policies haven't been in place for many years, but they did exist in previous times. And it's, that would be another way for the community, the city, to essentially start to increase the number of affordable housing units by requiring it as part of some of their tax exemption programs, you know, like MCD.
Just a very quick comment. So the requirement that was in place a while ago with MCD was actually a fee that was then utilized for the development of affordable housing. There was never a requirement to require a percentage of units be developed. In the current conversations with council, they are considering that option. But looking back to the past, it was actually a source of subsidy that helps support the development of affordable housing.
I was actually thinking that, I think in the 80s, there actually was a requirement.
I believe it was always a fee, that I can double-check.
It could be.
Yeah.
The 70s and 80s. It was a long time ago though.
Okay.
Well, but thank you very much.
Thank you for the update.
Thanks.
And welcome, Robin.
Thank you.
We're going to transition here, and let Stephanie get her presentation down. We don't have a presentation for the second item.
Okay.
So I'm just going to have Chris and Sasha join us. And I guess there's two chairs there. Welcome, Robin.
Thank you. We need to be sure they have access to the microphone, too. Good.
Yeah, if you would shut that down, that would be helpful. It's a little noisy.
Our next topic is moving ahead, planning for Eugene's key corridors.
Yes.
I'll let Terry make the introductions.
Okay, great. Thank you for having us talking about moving ahead. It's very exciting. I can almost hardly contain myself to be working on this project. It is really, really cool. Moving Ahead is a project that's a jointly-led project with the City of Eugene and Lane Transit District, where Sasha is from. And what it's doing is looking at how our community prioritizes the improvements, multimodal improvements, bike, pet, and transit, to build out the BRT system. So it's in its very early stages of project material development, so we don't have an overview of the project yet, or a website, but we will super soon. So the memo that I wrote to you kind of outlined what Moving Ahead is, what we will be doing, and how the Planning Commission will be involved. So one of the aspects of the project will be to have a sounding board made up of existing commissions and committees. And the Planning Commission is one of those. At the end of our discussion today, we'd like to ask for a couple of volunteers to serve on that committee. And I anticipate they'll start meeting sometime in the next month or so?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I did want to point out to you the significance, I guess, of planning staff's involvement in this project. I attached the typologies for the corridors to your memo, and then I also have these I can pass around. These are cross-sections of each of those that are on the list of typologies, if you want to look at those. But really, what it represents is an input that planning and urban design staff that we now have within the planning division is able to offer in the discussion of how infrastructure improvements are made in a corridor. And these are our key corridors that we're talking about. So in the context of Envision Eugene, we're talking about South Willamette, West 11th, which is under construction, River Road, 99, Coburg, and Franklin. And there are places where we are planning to increase redevelopment and accommodate a lot of our community's growth, coinciding with the build-out of the Bus Rapid Transit system. What also is cool about this project is that these corridors are being planned with bike and pet improvements at the same time, as we consider needed transit improvements. So it's really an opportunity to bring integrated land use and transportation planning to the infrastructure planning process, which, to me, is just where I get really excited. Guess that's what I have to say in terms of introduction, but given that there are not a lot of materials out about this project yet, we can do our best to answer your questions that you might have, or comments that you might have about how we're participating. And I'll give Chris and Sasha a chance to say anything they might want to add about the committee or anything else.
Maybe a little more about the project itself. Our public involvement plan, which is continuing to develop, is planning for five corridor-specific meetings at the end of May, where we will engage the community and listen to what their concerns are about each of those areas, and identify perhaps opportunities to improve the facilities to make them safe and accessible for people walking, biking, and riding the bus.
And I would just add, from LTD's perspective, this is really a new approach to corridor planning. We're not going corridor by corridor. We're taking the system-level approach to best prioritize which corridors, we're describing them as the low-hanging fruit, which ones make most sense to move forward now. And the potential outcome from this project could be multiple corridors moving forward into project development.
There's an efficiency in that approach from an environmental review perspective that's required by the Federal Transit Administration. Not necessary for walking and biking improvements, but for the transit improvements, there, we can save time and money in looking at the system as a whole, instead of each corridor sequentially. And that's a significant change.
Under NEPA, there's multiple environmental topics you have to go through, and roughly half of them make sense to approach at a system level, so you don't have to redo all the environmental work every single corridor. You can roll in the ones that make sense to do at a system level for each corridor.
So that's kind of a good segue into looking at the map. On the very back of your packet, or online, if you're looking online, is the overview map. And what I would say about this is that the purpose of it is to establish kind of what, which corridors, what streets are we talking about? And how will they go through the process of project development and design? It's not to do anything at the project-specific level with this map. So there was a comment earlier about, well, could this extend a little bit more up here? Or is there another link that might be made over here? And on this map, at least my understanding of this, is that it's a very high-level explanation of the corridors that we're studying under this phase of the project, and that detailed alternatives for alignment and where improvements would be made, would be done at the corridor-specific level.
And all of these corridors come from both what's called out in Envision Eugene as the key transit corridors, as well as LTD has their long-range transit plan, where they call out their frequent transit network. So where we hope, where we are delivering and where we hope to deliver 15-minute service or better, BRT is obviously a component of the frequent transit network. Just so, we didn't just throw lines on a map and say, this makes sense.
We're starting with seven corridors at the beginning of the analysis, and we hope to narrow the focus to four, to deliver with the environmental review all the way through the National Environmental Policy Act process, probably two years from now, give or take.
So those four then would contain that 50% overlap.
We would go into much more detailed planning. We're starting at the high level, and then as we narrow down the corridors, we focus our resources into coming up with more detailed plans around those corridors.
Commissioner Baker?
So I was just confirming, so that Belt Line would be considered a corridor, too, then?
Yes. Maybe not in the same sense as other more traditional services, but they would be connecting stations, likely.
Okay, yeah. I'm just trying to get my handle on, we had some, you know, one of our pillars is related to establishing housing along.
Oh, right. Not Belt Line. Right.
That we might need to have some clarif, you know, some listing of which ones we would be doing that on, and which ones we would not, so.
And are you ready for questions and comments from us? Do you have more presentation? I want to make sure that you have time to.
Give a little more information on the sound.
And right, and our main, our main task here is not just to share the information about what Moving Ahead is, but to recruit you to participate in the committee sounding board. And I can speak to that briefly.
Mm-hmm.
My notes. It's made up, as Terry said, from existing city and lane transit district committees, the Human Rights Commission, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Sustainability Commission, the MX Steering Committee, and a representative from Lane County Public Health. That the group would be a sounding board for ideas to, about, public input and recommendations that we receive from the community, to liaise between this group, the Planning Commission, and the committee sounding board, in place of staff perhaps, so that you can provide information to the Planning Commission, and solicit feedback from the Planning Commission, and bring it back to this broader group. Another purpose would be to provide advice on how we engage the community as we move through the process, and to validate the feedback that we receive and what we hear. To be clear, the committee sounding board will not make formal recommendations. It's a discussion group, but not a decision-making body.
Who are, sorry, that begged a question in my mind of who are the ultimate decision-makers in this project? If you could go over that.
The Eugene City Council and the Lane Transit District Board.
So Springfield's not involved in this?
So that is still being worked out, obviously, from the regional perspective. Springfield is part of our LTD system. And one of the corridors specifically that falls within Springfield that we'll be looking at is MLK Centennial. So we're meeting with Springfield staff to determine the best role. We're tentatively planning on holding one of the corridor workshops in Springfield as well, that will really focus on the North Eugene Springfield corridors. But Main McVeigh is heading forward at its own trajectory, so that's not part of this process.
So I have a couple of questions and a comment. So you were talking about doing the NEPA for the overall broad range. Would then that be refined once you go into the corridor one? Would you have to do a second NEPA per corridor?
So what we'll be doing at the system level is an alternatives analysis, and that alternatives analysis will cover system-level environmental topics from NEPA, which will then be folded into actual corridor-specific NEPA documentation.
Okay. So we will have narrowed down to four preferred alternatives that advance into that NEPA process.
Okay. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, is, you know, if you're, if you're looking at four and seeing what, what are the impacts going to be, or whatever, impact of one may be totally different than impact of number three, and, and to lump them all in, we'll need more.
Right. And not all of the environmental topics under NEPA would be covered at the system level. We recognize it's more appropriate at a corridor-specific level.
And then the other thing, on the committee makeup, the one that you mentioned, I didn't hear too much of the business community being represented in there. And I think that that's an important part. I don't know whether it's the chamber, whether it's what, but I mean, just with our experience of what we've done with West 11th, if you can get the business community to buy in at an earlier stage, that may be helpful. You know, that, of all the things you've mentioned, you know, the BPAC, Sustainability Commission, you know, those are all, all good, but those all lean to my, they all lean one direction. And if you're not bringing in somebody that's on the other side early on, I think you're setting yourself up for possibly, you know, similar experiences as you had with, with West 11th. And I don't And I don't think anybody wants that to happen. So possibly think about who that may be in those committees, just to bring that voice up and so that down the road you can say, hey, we heard these voices, not once you pick the four and start moving on. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, and we've heard that concern before. In addition to the sounding board, Sasha and I and Terry are meeting with individual stakeholders, and we've met with the Chamber of Commerce. We have meetings scheduled for other business group representatives as well throughout the process, and we do plan to meet likely with the chambers, they call it the local government advisory council or committee, and rotary groups or whoever else would have us. And the intent is to not necessarily raise one voice among any of the others and to use existing recognized bodies from each agency. It becomes tricky in how to meet that criteria and bring in business representatives, other than those that participate through the processes already.
I would just add, what we've heard through our stakeholder interviews thus far is to be most effective, going to them is the most effective thing, and so that's the tactic we're using for the chamber. We'll be going directly to them to provide input and gather, to gather input and provide information.
As opposed to having them on the sounding board?
Or coming to us, right.
There are also a couple of folks who wear dual hats in the community, so like on the MX Steering Committee, there are business representatives and in looking at.
Sustainability Commission, Carolyn Stein is going to be one of the representatives who plays a significant role in chamber involvement.
Right.
Commissioner Duncan?
I have to be somewhat careful here. Where is our city council on this? Does this work plan come with their approval, their direction? Are they supporting? Because they've been a little bit quiet about MX of late.
Well, all of, so the study is funded through a mix of Surface Transportation Program Urban Funds and the State Transportation Improvement Program Enhanced Funds, and those had to, those asks had to be approved by council, or at least the, what's it, Government Relations Committee? I forget the name. IGR, thank you. And maybe Sasha can fill in the rest because I'm drawing a blank.
Yeah, so we also, we have scheduled a joint LTD Board and City Council meeting for May 11th to introduce this project and the concept. Additionally, we are appointing city councillors and LTD Board members to what is the Oversight Committee, so that's really the governance committee of this project, and they will make formal recommendation to the board and city council. Additionally, I just want to add, while this is, while BRT is the highest level of transit that LTD can provide to this community, we're entering with the conversation of how does transit help you along these corridors, help the community achieve its goals, whether it's full BRT or some level of simple enhancements along the corridor. So we want that input from the community. So MX is the highest level, but it's not necessarily the level that some corridors may select at this point in time.
So I think that the workshops in May are going to be a really good opportunity for the community along each of these corridors to voice what their needs are, how they see the project helping them reach their vision. And I'll pick on River Road because we know that we're going to be doing a neighborhood-wide planning process with River Road and Santa Clara as soon as we get our urban growth boundary adopted. And that is going to coincide really nicely with the work done under this project, especially if River Road is selected as one of the four that goes forward into project development. Then we'll have this opportunity to do an area whole neighborhood plan in concert with the plan for the corridor itself that's multimodal, which is really perfect alignment of resources.
Commissioner Baker, then Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, again, I was just trying to dovetail our considerations in the past with enhanced development along the corridors. I mean, this is focusing more on the transit nature, it seems, rather than, so we have some, obviously some development considerations along the corridors that varies that, and I know the grant probably doesn't, is focused more on the transit-oriented concerns rather than the, say, housing or retail or whatever along the corridors and how that would be handled. I just wanted to mention that because I can understand why that wouldn't be as major a component, given the funding sources in the transportation group. The other question, though, which I assume you will get asked, is obviously if this were built out, what's the timeframe? You know, doing a NIPA study is fine, but if the timeframe is just 30 years or 40, 50, in other words, to develop out this enhanced transportation network, which might be EMX along these other corridors, are we looking, how far away is that, just so people have a horizon?
Well, I believe the Transportation System Plan update has a vision of this system being built out by the year 2035. So this is.
That's what I was trying to get at.
And what we're looking at is the next five, likely the next five to 10 years, and then the process will continue. And the brand for the process is called Moving Ahead. It's new. It's a jointly managed project between the City of Eugene and Lane Transit District, something that we haven't done before, and it has its own brand, and so that program or process or project will continue to have Moving Ahead with a tagline, Streets and Places Reimagined. And so that place is, again, perhaps where station locations are, what is the redevelopment opportunity there, and how can people safely access the transit system by foot or bicycle, and how it reaches out to the neighborhoods? That's very important in the process.
And I have one final question, and that is related more to the current, you know, the current system improvement plan that's in front of the, well, this is in front of the LTD Board now that they're going to make a decision.
The annual route review.
Right. So in other words, how much integration are you involved with? In other words, you have this longer-term vision, but we also have these short-term time horizons where decisions are being made now. Have you, I mean, what kind of overlap or consistency do we have with this and this?
I would say they're consistent in terms, I mean, obviously there's long-range planning and short-range planning, and the annual route review falls in short-range planning. But when you look at the recommendations made for this year's improvements, a majority of them are frequency improvements. So, and there, a lot of them are more, I would kind of call them smaller fixes at this point in time, but we all work very closely together. And I think if you see this, if the system is built out, you would see incredible, really important integration between, which we call service planning, which is the short-range planning, and long-range planning, because we would have to look at how our system functions. Currently, we have what we call a hub-and-spoke system, where everything basically has to come in and out of the main stations, Eugene Station and Springfield Station. And if this system were built out, it would really change to more community connectors that connect into the frequent transit network.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Well, I'd like to follow up a little bit on what Commissioner Baker said, and I guess somewhat of a response by Mr. Henry here on reaching out to the community. I get confused on whether this is just about EMX transit, or is it multimodal? Because if it's multimodal, I don't understand the relationships, because when I look at this map, you know, and I look at Envision Eugene, the corridors there go past the Belt Line. And if this isn't going past the Belt Line and it's on the corridor, I don't understand how those two things could be coordinated, or how you handle all the development or the people, and how do they get down and cross under the Belt Line to get to where this system is? I'm confused there of why it stopped at the Belt Line and didn't go out to the corridors, per se.
Well, specifically to that point, the current station on River Road is at Belt Line, and it's not further north, and there would need to be a terminus. Certainly, we'll be having that conversation about need and where is the best place to have a station location and how people access. As far as multimodal, the city has a pedestrian and bicycle master plan that identified needs along the corridors. And so this is an opportunity to find the synergies between the transit planning and the walking and biking planning to see where can we build out the system or improve the system and overcome the barrier that these corridors themselves provide. How do you cross the street to get from bus stop to bus stop or transit station to transit station is an important consideration. And how do you, as I mentioned before, get from the neighborhoods to the facilities?
So the EMX system is only going to go as far as the Belt Line? Is that what I'm, because when I see maps like this, they never expand beyond where they are. That's what they are, and that's where they stay. It's like a fait accompli.
We were attempting to be very high-level with this map, and so you're accurate in your calling out, especially when I look at this, River Road would go past the Belt Line likely. We don't have termini defined at this point in the project, but we will be defining them shortly, and we will update the map with more accurate lines.
Well, I know that they're doing some bus service from Gateway to possibly to Vet Center and all that, but that's not, I thought it might even have been EMX, but I guess it isn't at this point in time.
Correct.
Okay.
I have myself in the queue. I think I would echo Terry's excitement about combining planning and corridor planning and the transportation plan and the multi modes of transportation with bikes and peds and that, too. To be able to mesh all of that cohesively, I think, is really a good thing, and so I'm really looking forward to that potential in all of this. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, to piggyback on what Commissioner Randall said, I think that this is a really good nexus for a lot of things, but one of the ones that I see and I run across in some of the other hats that I wear throughout other committees is a way for us to look at this, not only system-wide with multimodal and the bicycles, the peds, and the bus, but also the funding aspects of this. Because, you know, right now, you know, on the street bond repair thing, there's a certain amount of money funded for multimodal, but other than that, there's really not a lot. So, you know, we've got different areas. We've got street bond money, can't use gas tax money for it because gas tax has to be road curb-to-curb. A lot of the, the street bond has to be curb-to-curb, there's a certain percentage that doesn't. And so I think that if we can look at this and say, okay, well, maybe we can use part of the BRT and finally get these done, because we've got a great bicycle pedestrian master plan, but there's really no funding in it except for the 500 or 600,000 that is in what the street bond repair thing is now. The CIP, you know, that's the other area. So, you know, we're bringing all these areas together. If we can bring them onto this umbrella and say, this is how we want to plan forward, and this may be a way that we can help fund it. So I think that that's an important component that needs to be brought up in these workshops. Is, yeah, we can plan for it all we want, but if there's not the, if there's not some source of funding going forward, it's just a plan. So I'm excited about that.
And that's what we've seen on the West 11th MX extension, is that it's the largest sidewalk project the city's ever had. And so there's an immense opportunity going forward to implement elements of the pedestrian and bicycle master plan. And in fact, the Federal Transit Administration has paid for those kinds of improvements pretty far-reaching off-system to access. Of course, the main goal is to build the transit service, but there are other needs as well.
Mr. Mill?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I share everyone's excitement about this, but I also have some trepidation because of my experience on MX and my participation in the South Willamette planning process, which was very challenging, and I don't know how you could have done much more. And it's not over yet, but I feel like a lot of what you're talking about here in terms of bringing more multimodal design to areas is going to have the same elements that we just went through on South 11th in a lot of cases and on, I'm sorry, in South Willamette and West 11th. So it's a great challenge. But I also wanted to put one other word in front of you, and that's car, auto congestion, because in the end, you know, that's one of the key topics we ended up talking about on South Willamette, and I hear, I've heard, I'm the first person to use that word, okay? So I just caution you to use that word, otherwise you're going to tend to alienate a lot of people. I mean, you bring a lot of people on board, but you alienate people when you don't include them. So.
That is a significant challenge in our community in this update of the Transportation System Plan, and how do we meet our climate reduction ordinance targets? We have law that says, consume less fossil fuel. And how do we do that if we continue to plan in the same way that we always have? And so we have to do things differently. Part of that is perhaps shifting the balance, or at least create opportunity for people to do things other than drive their car alone.
Terry, are we at a?
Well, no, I wanted to get myself in the queue. Oh. I just wanted to piggyback on a comment that Commissioner Baker made, and also just some of the discussion here around land use planning, and just make the point that I see it as an opportunity that we're involved so integrally in the project management and development of this work going forward, but it does not limit or negate any of the other very important land use work that we're doing. It enhances it. So I think it, we've learned a lot from South Willamette and from what's gone on along West 11th, and we will continue to be working on urban design projects and land use projects in River Road and the university area neighborhoods as we move forward with those projects. So I think it's an "and," and that's actually what's got me so excited about this, is that it's building on our capacity to really do integrated land use and transportation planning. That being said, the focus of the money on this grant is on the multimodal improvements and planning for those infrastructure improvements. But that in no way takes away from the other work that we're doing that will complement that and actually accomplish the integration. Does that make sense? Okay, good.
Question that I have is with the frequency, I guess some of the definitions with bus rapid transit and frequency of service. If we're targeting a 15-minute, let's say, frequency, does that, is that then defined as BRT, or that's just frequency of service?
That's just frequency of service. That's a good clarification.
Okay, yeah. So BRT is like EMX and?
Yeah, it has a lot, more of the infrastructure investments, such as the stations and the branded buses and potentially separated running facilities or bat lane business access and transit.
What's perhaps a new consideration that wasn't on the table when West 11th was developed was those same branded vehicles that have prepaid fares and roll-on, roll-off level boarding could operate in mixed traffic beyond just these business access transit lanes.
Well, I would, we do have mixed traffic operation on West 11th in some of our existing, but it's more of the conversation of this is a full-spread spectrum of options that we can look at to design the system.
Yeah. Commissioner Jaworski?
As I had said earlier, the multimodal is what confused me when I'm looking at something that's LTD. I would assume that when you look at it, you weigh several factors. I don't know how you weigh them, but you would probably consider the actual construction costs of where you're going to route these things as routes, one. Two, I don't know what you weigh against pedestrian, I mean, concentration of passengers or population areas versus just businesses, you know, because some of your things seem to be business location relocation, getting to and from on certain routes. How that mix fits in when it's intermodal, and how the city may look at this and say, for target composition of your ridership, you know, maybe the most affluent people in Eugene don't ride your bus, or a smaller percentage does. So does that mean that even if it's rapid transit? So, does that mean that even if it's rapid transit, that it might want to go through areas where there are concentration of people who might ride the bus even if it isn't related to work or both? How's that figure into this when I look at this map? And I don't -- to me, it doesn't look like it's addressing some of the things I raised there. It's where it's going to be built or how you get to it if it is built or you say it is on this.
Well, I mean, this is part of the reason we're partnering so closely with planning staff is these corridors have been called out. A majority of them have been in policy as BRT, the BRT system for since Transplan was developed. But, I mean, they were really called out in Envision Eugene as this is where the quote is going to go. So, we want to be able to get people from their homes to their jobs to school, and these are the core -- the main corridors that people travel. Obviously, there's the in-between, you know, you have a half mile or a mile to get to this corridor, and that's another question and another project.
Although it is part of it, I mean, I want to assure you, John, that part of the analysis of how these are designed and built includes what's the market for riding the bus. There is a whole market analysis component of the work plan in addition to the more technical transportation analysis and modeling. So, that part is heavy on the land use inputs. And I think four of us from planning will be involved in that workshop where we discuss, you know, on this corridor, what are the big employers, what are the big land uses, big population centers? What are we planning for in Envision Eugene and what might we see in the short term? Because we're really trying to plan for the next five to 10 years and make sure we get the infrastructure in place to serve where we expect those additional people and jobs to be. Okay, we're at the moment in time to get some volunteers, I think.
I would love to throw my hat in the ring.
There's going to have to be a vote.
I think you're going to have a shortage of volunteers.
Well, we need two.
Did I see hands there?
Who wants to throw their hat in the ring? How many meetings will this group likely have, do you think?
Six to eight.
Six to eight over an 18-month period.
And it's working with the other commissions and groups and then bringing that back to this full body for discussion.
There might be a month where, when we could have a big decision point come up.
When do you think you'll meet? Day, evening, any particular days?
Like, we haven't decided yet. We would send a doodle pullout to the representatives to figure out how -- what works best for everyone. I'm assuming evenings are easier for the majority.
So, I saw Commissioner Jaworski, myself, Mills, Borowski. Did I see your hand, too? Okay. You have a conflict? All right.
I will remind you also that we have a couple other subcommittees that will be gearing up over the next year or so, so think about that, what other committees you might be on in your overall committee load.
Just to clarify, this is the transit -- it's more the rapid transit, but bus, pedestrian, bicycle rather than the planning development along the corridors.
Well, I think the -- it's a good distinction because what the Planning Commission brings to this committee has to do with land use and it has to do with comprehensive planning. So, I wouldn't say it's all about just the transportation improvements, but it is corridor planning from the Planning Commissioner's perspective.
But I'm just trying to get -- I assume that these other committees might be focusing on that. Actually, it'd be more on the land as well. In other words, the --
Right, right. So, we'll have in the future a subcommittee on the River Road area plan perhaps, and we'll have one -- we already have one on the Clear Lake area. We'll probably have one on the comprehensive plan and then add them as we need them as we get further.
Okay. Well, and I have the list of the subcommittees that we're on currently and who's on how many and just I'll throw that out. Commissioner Baker's on four, Borowski on four, Duncan, you have a conflict anyway, you're on eight subcommittees. Commissioner Jaworski on five, Mills three, I'm on three, and Commissioner Taylor's on five, so just as far as --
In that regard, I think we should defer to the people that have the fewer numbers if they want to volunteer.
I was wondering about that.
You're one of them.
I'm one of those, yeah.
So am I.
And Commissioner Mills is one, so.
So, what accounting company has those numbers?
Let me ask, what are the -- I mean, so my subcommittee, you know, it meets --
You're the -- go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the CDBG one, which meets three times, and then it's done for a whole year. And then I don't know, I haven't been on any others. It may have --
Okay, you're on the UVO Community Liaison.
Yeah, that's a once-a-mira one, and I haven't done that yet, so.
And let me see what other ones you're on. TCRG and --
Alternate on Incentives and Investment Program.
And UGB Expansion for Residential. Yeah, so your workload is, as far as committees, is relatively light. Commissioner Mills is on TCRG, UGB Expansion for Employment in Public Lands Monitoring Program, and I am on the Human Rights Commission as the liaison, and that's once a month. And I'm an alternate on the TCRG, UGB Expansion for Residential, and Community Design Guide.
So, we could do a point two and have an alternate in case somebody's not able to make a meeting. That might be a way to at least have three on the list. Would that work?
Yeah.
Or what you -- another approach would be to point the two and leave the other three on the mailing list so that they would be informed of what's going on.
These have never met, really. But that's okay.
Okay. Well, how about -- I'm just going to -- I'll throw this out. Maybe Commissioner Mills and myself with Commissioner Borowski as an alternate. Is that --
The full commission will get --
Yeah.
Reports on --
And these meetings will all be open to the public, of course.
You can still go.
We're not going to lock the doors.
That's true.
The only concern we would have is if four of us show up, we're a quorum, so.
Yes.
I don't see how --
Well, actually, this isn't --
Even if you're in a room full of 100 people, there's four of us in the room, I don't see how it --
And this isn't -- this is a sounding board.
It's not a decision-making.
It's not a decision-making, so that's probably okay. I'm not the city attorney, I don't know. Is that -- yeah. Rob, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I'd just say if there's -- we'll follow up if there's any question about that. We need clarification.
My guess is it wouldn't be a problem because they'll probably be advertised as public meetings, and then you're good to go. If there's more than four, it was advertised, you're fine.
This way, we'll be sure to make sure we've got two people there that -- like, if one of us isn't there, it's somebody else there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, another item?
We actually -- you have another item?
No, you have another item.
Oh, I have another item, yes. Well, we are at items from commission and staff, and I have an item, but we usually go commission or staff first, so items from commission or from staff, excuse me.
Well, I'd say as far as we're concerned, the break is drawing to a close. We're going to have a busy spring. Some of you may have seen the tentative agenda come out recently, which includes quite a number of meetings coming up here through May and June, so got a lot going on with Envision Eugene, and here it comes. Other than that, I don't think we have any additional announcements to make, yeah.
Well, what about the PC recruitment process? Any update on that?
Well, the application period is closed. We have a couple of applicants. I haven't reviewed all of them, but I will be getting back to you with all the applicants in the process. I think there's interviews being scheduled currently with --
Council.
Yeah, with the council, and I think those are in May, so there's a little bit of time until then.
And who's -- Commissioners Duncan, who are the ones that are not?
I was one that was up.
Yep, Commissioner Randall, Commissioner Duncan, both are up and I believe have reapplied, so.
Is there a term limit?
There is no term limit. I reviewed the bylaws, there is none.
Former Commissioner Lettich would argue with that.
He would.
I had trouble finding one, too, so, okay. Okay.
So, I think no further items from staff.
From commission, did you have one?
Yeah, I did. I was just curious if there's been any input from staff. The Willamette mixed-use area has had its first significant development in it in the 2125 Franklin complex, and I'm just wondering if there's been any outreach to them or any communication back and forth on how the implementation of the Form-Based Code went on this first thing. I mean, that was one of the things when we were putting it out there. We were waiting for development to take place because this is the first area in town that really has had Form-Based Code, and I'm just wondering if there's any -- if we could get just an update on how a project of this size worked for both for the city and for the developer as far as Form-Based Code. Was it easier? Was it harder? Did it achieve the look that we were hoping for when we put Form-Based Code up? Just an update on that, because I think that that's an area that we may want to use going forward, and since we have it in one section of town and we have had a significant development on that property, I think it would be helpful to us to have an update on that.
Sounds good, we can do that. Great idea.
I had one item as we were looking at the schedule over the next couple of months, as Robin had mentioned, and we have upcoming the Envision Eugene Adoption Package and Housing Policies, Eugene Comprehensive Plan, the South Willamette Special Area Zone, and the Clear Lake Overlay Zone, and I think that's all in the next couple of months. And so my thinking is to help us as a commission be efficient and productive in our meetings. What I'd like to propose and try is a method that council uses in their meetings is to have a three-minute round for us to be able to comment or ask questions when we get into some of those decision-making things. And we'd have a first round, and we'd each get three minutes, up to three minutes. We wouldn't have to use the whole three minutes, but up to three minutes. And then if we have time, have a second round, and I think that'll help us stay maybe focused on some of the decisions that we have to make and be able to get everybody's input and keep moving ahead because we've got a lot to cover in the next couple of months.
So, you're suggesting a three-minute round, Robin, for getting our questions out?
Getting our questions out, so especially on the stuff that requires decisions. Information times like today, I think we can be a lot more flexible. I don't think it's critical, but I think when we get into the things where we've really got to get decisions made and get things to council and make recommendations, I really think we need to kind of focus in a little more and kind of hone in on some of the times when our questions -- Robin?
Just a question for clarification. Would that be specific to legislative decisions versus quasi-judicial?
Yes, just legislative. I think quasi-judicial, we have to --
Be more talk out.
Just to clarify, those are just to get our questions out, then the staff would respond?
Yes, that would be just us to get our question out and then staff --
Limit us to three minutes, too, if you want to.
I could probably limit staff to three minutes, but, you know, I think they can probably get to that. I just know when you're in a public hearing setting and, you know, people going before council, you can say a lot in three minutes, and, you know, I just think that'll help us stay focused.
Question?
Yes.
So, with that, who -- are we going to bring the clocks in? I mean, what's the logistics on this? Because at council or in the Budget Committee, I mean, there was somebody with the button, you know, and then when staff, it goes against your time, you know, they stop the clock and stuff like that. I mean, are we going that far or are we just going to put somebody's phone on at three minutes?
I think we could probably ask for a staff volunteer to put their phone on for three minutes and --
At least for the trial run, that seems to be --
At least for the trial run, let's try that.
Right.
You know, I know we don't have the little red, yellow, and green lights and all of that, but I think that could work. I think that could work pretty well.
And since we're talking about it, just as a discussion, when I was chairing the Budget Committee, it was a timed -- it was a timed minute, and it was a two-minute time, and we, you know, we'd do rounds. And one of the things that I brought up was, well, and it wouldn't -- I don't know if it would work here, but we had the two-minute round, but each time, each meeting, each member could have one super round so that if you were -- if you were trying to convey a thing and you got to a minute and 30 seconds and you had another minute to go, you could say, this'll be my super round, and you got an extra two minutes. But anyways, that was just a --
I think let's start with three minutes, keep it simple.
Yeah, three's fine. It was when there were two, it's hard -- sometimes it's hard to --
That's careful, game shows like that.
Exactly, the super round. It was well-used.
I know when I first joined the chamber and we had to develop our elevator speech, we had to talk about ourselves and our business and what we did, and we had 30 seconds, and it can be done, so, anyway.
Super time.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baker.
No, 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 just when you're ready for next --
Oh, next item for staff. Well, I think everybody's going to go along with me on this, at least give it a try. Okay, Commissioner Baker?
A couple of things I wanted to mention. The -- there's a Historic Review Meeting on April 9. We're looking at the plan for the Historic Review Staff Plan. So, if anyone is interested, you'd sit at 30 in the slot room here. And I also wanted to mention, I also, I've gone to a couple of the housing policies that Commissioner Duncan wasn't able to go to, and they were interesting, and they're very -- last an hour, an hour and a half over lunch on Monday, and we haven't had meetings every Monday, so let's do it.
And I believe we've actually, I think Terry sent an email that we're not scheduling Planning Commission on the first -- trying to, at least.
Right, I don't think I sent an email, but it's, I believe, reflected in your tentative schedule that we're trying to hold those first Mondays free.
Yeah, I got one from somebody saying that was what we were trying to do.
Okay.
I don't know if it was you or for me or Robin, yeah.
And the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Land Transit District was having a -- was having two public hearings on their annual route review, which is essentially the current plan, which is interesting, and they had one already on the 18th, but they're having another one on April 6th, and I assume it's the same thing, 5:30 at the library. And I found it interesting, you know, or you can download the document or look at the document online as well, just to see where the route improvements are and where they're -- you know. There is a mention here of finally doing some kind of connection to the airport, but it may not happen this year again, so it's interesting. Anyone wanted to mention those two?
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
On that note, the CDBG Subcommittee is in the allocation process for this year in conjunction with we're doing, you know, the five-year plan, but we're also allocating this year's funds, so that process is going on as we speak. We've met once or twice, and once, we'll be meeting again next week and coming up with the recommendations for the spending on the block grant money.
Seeing no other items from commission, I think we can adjourn.
Oh, one more question. I heard that there might be an appeal coming before us that came back from the Court of Appeals?
Yeah, I think that's not ripe quite yet.
Everybody has to make a decision yet.
Yeah, I'll let you know. We'll let you know as soon as we hear about that one.
Might need some more meetings.
Might.
All right.
Bug in my ear.
Okay, well, with that, we're adjourned.